Exactly.
Okay, good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock. We are now going to reconvene the regular meeting of the Board of Education at 6:00 PM with Bridge, Cruz, Gagne, and Shaver present. Before we begin, please silence all electronic devices and note that these proceedings are being recorded and livestreamed on the Chino Valley Unified District's YouTube channel. Pat, please.
The board met in closed session from 4:30 PM to 5:47 PM regarding conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation to cases, conference with labor negotiators ACT and CSCE, public employee dismissal release, public employee appointment, elementary school principal, elementary school assistant principals, junior high school assistant principals, high school assistant principals, and public employee performance evaluation superintendent. The board took the following actions by unanimous vote of five zero with Bridge, Cruz, Gagne, and Shaver voting yes. Appointed Kit Madkin as assistant principal Newman Elementary School effective July 19th, 2021. Appointed Jamie DeVoe as assistant principal Glenn Mead Elementary School effective July 19th, 2021. Appointed Tina Herrera as assistant principal Oak Ridge Elementary School effective July 19th, 2021. Appointed Lisa Canetta Lee as assistant principal Rolling Ridge Elementary School effective July 19th, 21. Appointed Michelle Bonama as assistant principal Townsend Junior High School effective July 19th, 2021. And appointed Oliver Wong Ah Soon as assistant principal Don Lugo High School effective July 19th, 2021. And there were no further actions requiring public disclosure.
Thank you very much, Pat, and congratulations to all of our new administrators. Leading us in the pledge tonight would be Mr. Cruz.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Moving on to item one, C. Presentations. Meeting herself, Mrs. Gagne requested an update on the Preserve Two school. And so tonight, Mr. Terry Tao is joining us. Mr. Tao?
Thank you very much. I'm going to take this office. It's okay, since there's a lot to talk about. Let's see, how do we get the presentation up? There. Well, I'll just kind of get us started while the presentation is being put up because I felt that it was important to give the board a good overview of what the negotiations have been over the past three years. I did receive some correspondence which causes me some concern. And I'll just tell you what the concern is. Some of the information that's been going on in the public has been that a concern that the district may drag their feet, may not get their act together, but it's nothing of the sort. The reality is, the district has been proceeding in good faith to get this school ready up and in operation. But the reality is, when you are a public school district, it becomes very, very technical how it is that you go about not only acquiring property, but also through the process of going through what's called the California Department of Education and the Division of State Architect. So, we're going to go through some of that because we went through a whole education process with Louis Company, and we're going to talk about exactly what it is that is going on. There's also some scuttlebutt in the community that the district is thinking about speculating on the land, which is anything but true, that there's no way that the district would be thinking about doing something like that. For example, I know that there was a property that was set aside in College Park, and the district released that because the district really is not in the business of taking school sites or potential school sites and banking them or trying to speculate on the value of property. So, this is really a timeline of what's happened and where we are in the process. We're going to go through some of the school development process, the timeline of the work that's been performed. I'm going to give you an estimate of where it is that we're likely to be and when this work is actually going to start and when it's going to complete, and where we are on the acquisition of the school site, and what our next steps is. So, when we first started talking to Louis, Louis had told us, at least told me and the district administration presently, that they're experts in the area of building schools. After all, they built the Cal-Aero School. So, they had put in some really unrealistic timelines in the revisions to a purchase and sales agreement that I had put together for them. And we were a little surprised. So, I spent a little bit of time educating the Louis folks on what a school district has to go through in order to acquire property. So, this is a letter that I wrote to Louis on May 21st of 2019. And what I go through is Education Code Section 17210, which governs school districts, and the Title V requirements that are applicable. So, you'll see, the first thing we do is we go through the geotechnical and soils analysis, and then hazardous waste analysis, whether or not the site is on a former or near other hazardous waste sites. A Department of Toxic Substances Control review is necessary. In fact, tonight, we're going to go through an amendment to your California Environmental Quality Act because of some DTSC requirements. Apparently, this property at one time was ag land, and some of the chemicals that were used for ag land really affect the ability to put a school there without going through a notice process, a removal process, a whole analysis, and probably it was just orange groves. So, it's nothing special, but nowadays, with schools, it has become so technical that you need to watch out for everything, and you have a different agency responsible for each piece. So, this was a 12-page letter. And in the 12-page letter, we go through each of the requirements associated with hazardous substances, each of the requirements associated with if there's a pipeline nearby. We went through the consultation process that the school district has to go through under Title V, air quality, anything within a quarter of a mile, traffic corridors, special requirements if you're over a certain amount of cars that are driving by your site, compliance with California Environmental Quality Act, and also the preparation of environmental impact statements that are necessary in order to take everything out to the public. So, anything that you encounter that might have an effect on your site, if you have a toxic site nearby, if you have even like a business that spray paints things, you're going to end up talking about it in public because that's one of the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act and Title V. You will go through state clearinghouse requirements. You'll get department efficient game approvals. You have to get county approval. You have to get parks approval. You have to get city approval. And you also have to get a city letter that says that you've met all of the local requirements, which we've already gotten. So, as we've gone through all this, we've checked against the long-range master plan. We've checked against general plan conformity, zoning requirements. And then, the last stop is what's called California Department of Education review. So, California Department of Education gives you a nod after all of this is done. So, where we are right now is actually fantastic. We have frankly just finished all 12 pages of this letter, and it's taken almost, in fact, I'll go through the schedule. We have gone through all 12 pages of this letter now, and this is what we've done. September 10th, 2018, we went to the California Department of Education, and we notified them that we wanted our site approval, a site evaluated. So, that happened on September 10th, 2018. We went to our architect on June 1st, 2019, hired them, and started them on the process of designing this project, the Preserve Two school. We brought our environmental consultant Placeworks on August 15th, 2019. And we notified Louis at that time that our sequel consultant had notified Louis that they had a stockpile of soil on our site, and that they would not be able to dig down to the location that was necessary in order to evaluate whether or not there were any toxins originally deposited on the site, which later on, we figured out that this was an ag site, agricultural use site, which did require what's called a mitigation plan with regard to Department of Toxic Substances Control. They're the party that's responsible for all removal and oversight of toxins on all sites, but primarily, they govern school sites. We went on to get a license agreement with Louis so that we could go on the site to do our investigation. On September 25th, 2019, we got the Division of Aeronautics approval so that we know that we're not too close to any airports or airplanes that could crash into the site. And on October 29th, 2019, Louis had indicated that they would have the stockpile of soil removed by January of 2020, December of 2019. So, we had our sequel consultant do everything else. On February 13th, the stockpile had not been removed yet. So, our sequel consultant could move no further, and there were some discussions between district staff and Louis about the fact that we couldn't get down far enough in order to get to the native soil so that we could test it. Louis actually removed the soil on October 1st, 2020. So, there was a work stoppage from February 13th, 2020 through October 1st, 2020, waiting for Louis to remove the stockpile. It was about an eight-month delay. The sequel consultant resumed work on November 5th, 2020. We continue on. We got our geological assessment done on January 21st of this year. We advertised for a public hearing for preliminary environmental assessment report approval by the board. That happened on February 13th. The Board of Education actually conducted the public hearing on March 18th of this year. We did our preliminary environmental assessment report with Department of Toxic Substances Control on March 19th. We finalized, the sequel consultant finalized the addendum that was required by the Department of Toxic Substances Control based on what they found underneath the stockpile. And that report is going to be on your agenda today. So, today, you're going to hopefully approve an agenda to the environmental impact report that addresses a mitigation monitoring plan associated with former ag use and all the removals that are required, all the monitoring that's required with former ag use, so that you could use this as a school. So, that's tonight. So, I thought I'd go over the stockpile a little bit. So, these are some pictures of the stockpile. I was, I had written a letter on July 23rd of last year notifying Louis that they did not remove the stockpile. And in my letter, what I note to them is that it's not possible for the school district to continue work because they need to get underneath the stockpile in order to do toxics testing. And we now know that we found something. So, that's something of importance that that actually stopped our work for a little while. So, I just thought I'd review the timeline of what actually happened. So, starting September 19th, the district notified Louis of the stockpile potentially affecting the ability to work. I wrote correspondence June 3rd, 2020. I'm sorry, I wrote correspondence on July 23rd, 2020 notifying Louis of the fact that there was a work stoppage because of the stockpile. I thought you guys would be interested, or the board would be interested in how much soil got removed. It was 144,722 cubic yards. 5,361 truckloads of soil got removed from the Preserve Two site. So, there was no way that a environmental consultant could have gotten underneath all of that soil in order to test the underlying site, in order to get us our Title V approvals, and to get us our California Department of Education approval of the site. The stockpile took a significant amount of time to remove. It was actually completed on October 1st of 2020. So, I thought you would like seeing the difference between the stockpile before and after. June 2020 is a picture on the left of the mound of dirt, the stockpile that was on the site. June 2nd, 2021, yesterday, staff went out there, took a picture, so that we could see the completely flat site and the soil having been removed. So, this is the remaining work that still needs to be done. The primary issues are all outside of the district's control, unfortunately, because we have to get approvals under Title V from outside agencies and under Title 24 to other outside agencies. So, Title V is California Department of Education requirements. So, we soon will be ready after tonight. We will soon be ready to submit for California Department of Education approval. We expect to have a submission in August. And we, I'm sorry, we expect to have an approval in August or October. It's at least a three-month window in order to get the California Department of Education approval. We hope that we will be able to do it in less than three months, but it could take as long as seven months. We address some of that in the timeline. I thought I'd note the second bullet point. We absolutely positively must have what's called a super pad site. What a super pad site is, is a site that is prepped and ready for receiving a building on it. That's what's required under the agreement that we entered into with Louis in May of 2004. That agreement says that Louis would provide to the school district upon purchase a super pad site. And what a super pad site is, is it has to be plus or minus a tenth of the final grade. It has to be properly compacted so it can receive to school. It has to have all of the utilities there. That means sewer, water, electricity, gas has to be present on the site. It has to have streets, roads, and gutters, at least on two sides of the site. And upon delivery of that, we would be able to complete our school. So, our drop dead date in which to receive a super pad-ready site would be June 2022. Title 24 governs what's called DSA. So, DSA is Division of State Architect. That is the agency that's responsible to make sure that the schools are designed to a higher standards than your local buildings, commercial or home buildings. Title 24 has something called, what's called the Field Act. So, all schools are designed to a higher standard to withstand earthquake, side-to-side motion, and they're not supposed to collapse during an earthquake so that they can be used as safe havens and are often used as your place of last resort in case of an emergency. So, we need to go into DSA. That process is also out of our control in order to meet all of the Title 24 requirements. That process, we expect, will take at least nine months. The time that it takes just for DSA to actually receive the documents and open them can sometimes be as long as five months. So, that's how busy the Division of State Architect is. Fortunately, we're in the Southern California region. We're in San Diego rather than LA. LA is a minimum of five months. San Diego is a little faster, so you'll be a little faster than your brethren over in, say, LA Unified or Santa Monica. We expect to be out sometime between November 2021 and July 2022. The moment we're out, we will be ready to go to bid. Usually, that process takes a month or two, just to prepare the documents, put out your bid, and be ready to hire a contractor. Sometimes, there are protests that will protract that out. I don't know. I hope not. We expect to receive a bid awards by October of 2022 if we're on schedule. Certainly, if any of the agencies, CDE or DSA, are quicker than we anticipate, we're going to bid this project out quicker. And then, we would take approximately 21 months in order to build this school, and we would be ready on August of 2024. If we do not get our site by June 2022, even off by a month or two, you may not make that August 2024 date. So, this is, all of those steps, all of the things talked about in that 12-page letter, we have spent $1,574,000 to date. $1,443 on the architect, $117,000 in California Environmental Quality Act, $13,198 on the Department of Toxic Substances Control. That's the Oversight Agency State of California. The moment we submit to DSA, after we finish our CDE approval, we're going to spend another $276,990 just in plan check fees alone. So, your sunk cost with regard to this project in order to start is $1,851,503. And here's the kicker. We don't own the property yet. So, we have spent all of this money on a property we do not own. So, we should talk a little bit about why we don't own the property. I'll just mention really quick, and we'll talk about it in a little bit more detail. My office in 2019 issued a purchase and sale agreement, a standard purchase and sale agreement to Louis. And we said, this is how we normally do our purchases. It's very technical. It needs to happen under Education Code Title V requirements. And unfortunately, we had to issue the 12-page letter to educate Louis on the process. Louis has insisted on a repurchase because they have said they don't trust us. They think that we're not going to meet our deadline. They have to have this school, except we're the school district. I can't in good conscience or legally bind the school district to a repurchase agreement because it would be an illusory contract that you would be entering into. It's just not a legal contract. They're going to tell you another school district entered into this agreement where they allowed a repurchase. But the terms of that agreement, I've never seen. They've never submitted them to me. And I don't even know who the legal counsel was who did the agreement because when I read the code, that is not something that the code allows us to do. So, I want to be clear. The right to repurchase is not something that legally you can enter into because it creates an illusory contract. It creates something that you're banking on that doesn't even exist. And you have to own the property in order to proceed with a DSA approval. You have to own the property in order to start spending money on it. But we've already spent almost $1.6 million on this property because we believe Louis. We want to believe that we're going to end up with this property. But for now, almost three years, we've been saying, can we have the property? Can we buy the property? Can we do this purchase agreement? And Louis has insisted on a repurchase right because they want to govern and dictate to the school district when you finish the school. And I don't think that that's right. We are sticking to the schedule. We're trying to complete it, but it's so technical, and there's so many requirements that I can't guarantee when it is that the school district is going to complete. So, what they're asking us for is something that almost binds the district to some conditions that we don't even have control over. Well, let's look at what we're looking at. So, this is a picture of the school. I thought people would be interested in seeing it. It's been designed out. We are just about ready to submit to DSA. We cannot submit to DSA yet until we get our California Department of Education approval. The reason why is twofold. One is, the California Department of Education may not like the drop-offs, and they may require us to reconfigure. California Department of Education may question some of the steps that we've gone through or ask us to redo some of the steps. The other is, they also review all of your classrooms and their relationships, what's called an ed spec review. So, remember, schools are different now than they were, at least when I was a kid. The classrooms are configured differently. They're more technical. They have to have different requirements. Your playground requirements are very specific. So, it's all dictated by Title V for fun. You can always log on to the California Department of Education website, and you can look at the pages and pages of requirements that school districts must meet. So, if we miss one, then the architect has to redesign. We do not want to spend that $270,000 only to say, hold on, we need to pull the drawings back. We need to redesign them. So, we need to get our CDE approvals first. So, in, this is another view of the school. And this school has gone through a lot of thought. We've gone through all of the requirements. I will mention to you that some of the things that the California Department of Education requires you to review are the ed specs themselves. You actually have to bring them here so that you've had a chance to look at what those ed specs are. Let's talk a little bit about the mitigation agreement. So, in 2004, we entered into a mitigation with, agreement with Louis. This mitigation agreement was very specific as to what was required for site acquisition. It simply says, this language right here, which is Article 2.13, that after the district tenders payment, then the developer shall convey title to the school site, and it should be unencumbered by any liens or under other encumbrances. It's that simple. Unfortunately, as you all know, since you've all probably purchased houses at some point or another, in order to open an escrow, you actually need a purchase and sale agreement of some form. And Louis keeps inserting this repurchase right. I think it's called Article 5.5 in their agreement. So, we cannot agree to that. Every time it's come to us, I've turned it down and said, no, we can't agree to it. And they've received many pieces of correspondence from us saying, we cannot agree to a repurchase right. So, it's not rocket science. Think about it this way. If you were purchasing a house, and the prior owner said, if you don't move in, and you don't finish all of your repainting and recarpeting, or whatever it is that you're going to do to the house within three months, then I want the house back. I don't think that that's really the type of condition that I don't think that that's really the type of condition that anybody would enter into in order to do a house purchase. You would not want to have strings attached to what you're going to do with the house that you buy. So, much like that, you wouldn't want those types of strings on you. And there is no such requirement for repurchase in the 2004 mitigation agreement. This is the language on what's called the Super Pad site, what it means. That's just a definition. I've already talked about it a little bit, so I won't belabor it. So, where are we today? We have proceeded in good faith. We have expended $1.574 million. We are ready to drop another $276,000 in as soon as we get our CDE approvals. Frankly, my opinion is Lewis has been terribly difficult about the standard purchase and sale agreement. I got their correspondence that was dropped on the district today saying, "Hey, we just want a repurchase. We want you guys to keep escrow open." But the reality is, we need to own this property. So, what I told Lewis during our meeting last week, I think it was on the 27th, was the school district is going to drop all of the money of the value of the property from our appraisals, $24.4 million. We're going to drop it into an escrow agreement. We're going to give Lewis a one-pager. What I call a one-pager, it's actually about three pages. But we're going to give him a three-page agreement or four-page agreement that just says what it says in the original mitigation agreement. And if Lewis doesn't agree, then we may have no choice but to go to arbitration. The 2004 mitigation agreement was very specific. It said that if we tender money, Lewis is supposed to tender us a Super Pad site. And we know where the site is. We have the legal description. We want to own the site. We're ready to tender the money. There's no reason why there should be a condition. We are acting in good faith. We frankly will probably meet that 36 months that we were talking about, or 18 months for that matter. So, there will be a school there. But borrowing another COVID that could slow you down, or a crash in the stock market, which we hope would never happen, we think that you're going to be right on schedule. Any questions?
All members, if you have questions, please use the light system. It's working this evening. I see Mr. Knopf.
Yes. We have, in our room, we have limited seatings here, but down the hallway, we have many parents, and especially the students are eagerly waiting to hear good news from this meeting. So, what would be the timeline, in a best scenario, that we could agree on everything and things could go smooth, smooth as possible, to deliver this site to our student body there? Preserve One, school is so impacted. We really need that Preserve Two school built as soon as possible.
Well, this slide, Slide 11, is our anticipated timeline. Certainly, the first two, the first item and the third item, which is the CDE approval and the DSA approval, those are outside of our control. But if those go faster, then we will go faster. If they go slower, then we're going to, our anticipated kind of worst-case scenario is the August 2024 date. But if DSA is able to turn things around, every month we save off of the schedule is a month that the school is going to be done earlier.
So, it could be maybe six months sooner?
Could be. I don't think it'll be that much, but could be.
All right. Thank you.
Could you push yours, Mrs. Gonya? It would be Mrs. Gonya and then Mr. Cruz.
So, I just want to... Man, every meeting. So, I just want to clarify. So, at this point, well, first, I want to make a preparatory comment. No one on this board was around in 2004. No one was around when the first school was built. So, I want to be very clear that no one here made any decisions or acted in bad faith with the first school. So, if that is the operating premise on either side, we are five new people who were not around when that first school was built, and we're not a part of that transaction. In this particular case, essentially, sort of boiling this down and getting through all the legalese, and I really appreciate the thorough presentation of going through all the steps, the district is ready to cut a $24.4 million check, drop it in escrow account, and sign an agreement today.
Yes.
If that's not agreed to by Lewis, the district's going to force arbitration. How long is that arbitration going to take?
Arbitration typically is a much faster methodology. We hope that we can get into arbitration between three and five months, and then we would proceed from there. The agreement, the 2004 agreement that we entered into with Lewis, actually has all of the timelines halved. So, my hope is actually that we'll abide by the terms of that agreement where all the timelines are halved.
So, if the district forces arbitration, which is binding, and the district is willing to accept, well, both parties are forced to accept binding arbitration, this could be resolved through that process in three to five months, and we can move forward.
We hope so. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Cruz.
See, I could understand, you know, there is uncertainty with outcomes and anticipations and even regret. You've got the community of Chino, people wanting to come in there mainly for their children to go to a safe school, to a safe neighborhood. It's a very family-oriented neighborhood. At the same time, Lewis is a business. There's also uncertainty on their part. They want the school to open up because they're in the business of building homes. Chino Valley is in the same, they're in a different area, but there's uncertainty on their part, probably has to do with kids, so forth. But here, here it states, within three years, the school has to, they have to start constructing the new school site. And it says, "Lewis has a right to repurchase a site if such a construction does not start." So, once it starts, it's ready to go. And that's the end of the repurchasing because the school has started already, the building of the school. So, after the Super Pad, because at my school district, they're building a school, and I think what you were describing about the Super Pad, once they put, and once they placed the Super Pad, man, the construction just took off. But that did take a year. I have to admit, it did take a year. But once this construction starts, the repurchase ends. If that contract saves it, but that's what I'm reading here. So, I understand about mitigation and all that, five, three months, but, you know, right here it says, you know, "With a right for Lewis to repurchase a site if such construction does not start." Is there a possibility that construction cannot start within three years?
It's possible. I'll give you, here's my concern, and I'll be somewhat blunt about it. And I apologize for being so blunt about it ahead of time. What Lewis is asking for is a timeline for our start of construction to be built into a purchase and sale agreement, which is a little peculiar. That's not the way you normally do it. But let's just say we agreed to that. And you had something go wrong. Something happens at Division of State Architect, which causes a delay. Something happens at CDE that causes a delay. Or the financial markets are such that something happens and you aren't able to proceed. If something like that, remember, in 2010, the financial markets crashed, so you actually could not sell a bond. So, you would not have been able to come up with the money in order to actually do the construction project. It's possible, not likely. It's possible. It has happened in our lifetimes. So, what would happen is, let's say we missed that timeline. What if it was 37 months or 38 months? What Lewis has told us during our meeting of May 27th is, "Trust us. We're good guys. We will give you the extra time if you need. You can bake it into a contract." But I have a little bit of shell shock. I was not your attorney, and I know none of you were here previously when the Cal-Aero School was built. And I have flashbacks to that period of time because you need to remember what it is that happened. There was a difficulty at the district because of the financial status. You guys had, it was kind of a messy time financially here. And the district could not meet their timelines, and Lewis sued you and held you to the letter of that 2004 mitigation agreement, the same one that I put up on the screen. And then, they took you all the way through the arbitration, and then afterwards, they hit you guys for attorney's fees. They held you to the letter of the agreement, every word of it, and held you responsible, and then took $1 million from you for attorney's fees. So, why would I expect anything different from them when they were so dishonorable
Mr. Bridge.
Thank you for the presentation, and I appreciate seeing the timeline up there. And having attended several meetings at the Department of Ed up on 15th Street in Sacramento, I, not related to this topic, but just general Board of Ed meetings up there, that is very true when it says that we have zero control over when they're going to process our application, when the Department of State Architecture is going to approve our plans, and that is totally out of our control, and I'm glad you listed that up there. Because any of us that have done home improvement projects, and I've learned in the tile in my own house, there's always a snag somewhere. And mine was three months, waiting for one piece of a five-piece set of tile to arrive because the 27-store chain didn't have that one size in any of their stores. So, I've learned there's always going to be a snag, and I wouldn't want to commit to a certain timeline, not knowing that everything wasn't going to go perfectly. So, I appreciate this, and I hope, you know, the community understands that we're trying to do our best, and we'll, you know, we'll do it.
Thank you.
Mr. Knopf.
Yes. I wasn't there at 2004, but I see Louis' home as our partners, partners for our community, partners for our school district, the schools they have built. We have full classrooms. It was built well, and it attracted students to come to our school district. So, I see them as partners. And second, if there's a mistrust between both sides of the aisle, we might need a mediator. Maybe it's right that we're going to the arbitrator at this case. But let's be flexible. If there's an item such as a timeline, repurchase agreement or proposal, we could always put exception clauses. Yes, it's not as clean as clean sheet of paper, ordinary contract, but if there are issues, like for instance, when you have an insurance, you have clauses, "Such, such case, these are not covered." But otherwise, it should be covered. First, within two years, if you have such, such disease, this insurance is void. So, there's a flexibility in any agreements. But we need to become a partner first. You know why? It's not because of the, what had happened in the past. It's not because the one has to benefit financially, but it's for our children, children's sake. Our students do not understand. Yes, we went through many complexities and time limits, and we've put money in there, over $1 million and all that. But main thing is, the kids, they want the new school. They want the classrooms where they can bring their siblings to school, and the parents feel safe. That's all. As an adult, over 18-years-old here in this room, we need to work toward that goal. No more animosity, no more mistrust. It's the kids' sake. We are the setting sun. The children's are the rising suns. Whatever that we have the disputes, guess it hurts whom? Not us, because we have graduated from schools already. It's the children. So, anything, we need to go back to the drawing board, and let's hammer things up for the children's sake. Thank you. But I'd like to thank Louis' home. Thank you.
I will, I do have one comment.
Yes.
And I think it's important to bring it up. Louis Holmes, who's sitting out in the audience here, they have hired some of the most expensive attorneys that money can buy here in Los Angeles. And those attorneys sat right here with me on the 27th, and they said, "It's perfectly legitimate to put in a repurchase clause." But they couldn't cite to a code that allowed them to do that. So, are they just inventing the law? Because everything's statutory, everything's technical in our world. But they're saying, "Just do it. You can do it. This other school district, they did it, so therefore, you can do it." And I don't remember ever practicing law because somebody else did something. I practiced law because I looked at the code, and I say, "Okay, the code says that I can do it, so therefore, I will." They have not been able to provide a code to me. They have not provided anything to me saying that it's legal in order to do a repurchase. So, as far as I'm concerned, there's nothing that allows them to do what it is that they've held us up for over three years on. So, that's my point, which is, they cannot rely on something that does not exist in order to do a repurchase just because some other school district did it. If somebody else broke the law, does that mean that I should break the law too? Does that mean you should break the law too? I don't think so.
Mrs. Gonya.
I don't have any further questions, but I do have two comments. This is not my area of the law, so I will fully disclose, this is not my area of the law. But I want arbitration. I want it fast. I want an arbitrator to tell one side what to do and get it done. So, at this point, that's what needs to happen. The faster that happens, the better. This has been dragging on way too long. No side's going to bend on this, so I think we need to go to arbitration. Hopefully, in three months, this is done, we move forward with this timeline. I also want to address, though, that the reason that I asked for this item today is, and I'm not sure where this came from, but not a fan of gossip. There has been rumors put out in the community that we're not building this school, that we're going to stop. We haven't done anything. I can only speak for myself on this board. It is my full intent, the school gets built, that we move forward in this process. I'm not sure where the information came from. I got a ton of emails of people saying, "You guys are stopping the school." I don't know where that came from, but I don't like it because it's not true. And I have to say, if we took a straw poll today of the board, you know, several of us were on the board when we made a decision in May 2019. I'm going to guess that a majority of those people who made that decision are in favor of moving forward with the school. So, I think it's very important beyond what we went through here today. There is a clear timeline of how this gets done. Some of this is not in our control. It goes through state agencies. I wish state agencies moved faster, trust me. But I just want to make sure that whatever we do next, that in August 2021 to October 2021, we are getting this site approval into CDE, and we are moving forward. And frankly, just, and I'm just trying to be as honest as possible, I just think that's going to happen through arbitration. So, let's arbitrate. Let's figure it out. Let's stick to the decision of the arbitrator, and let's stick to this timeline. But I do want to make it clear to this community, and everyone else in this dais can speak for themselves, the school is getting built.
Thank you.
Mr. Knopf.
Yes. I'd like to see the school to be built as soon as possible. And being a partner with Louis' home, and being a partner with our parents, living in our community, it is very critical. There are many things that you cannot do alone in this life. And if we have such a feeling of distrust, mistrust, that needs to go away. That needs to go away. We need to come to the podium. We need to come to the table. We need to come to the podium, we need to come to the table, shake hands, and start new. I think that's my opinion from this board, to move this forward in a fast pace. I appreciate everyone's hard work, including the Louis' home here, their representation here, letting the parents to come to our school board meeting. I think really it's going to help us to move this process faster. Having the community's interest, and let me tell you, all the parents, keep it up. Sometimes, it's the only way that it's going to work. Thank you.
Any other comments from board? It's not working, would you like to make a comment? Go ahead.
You know, I think it's the frustration that, you know, Major G, one of the components of Major G was building another site in the preserve area. But you mentioned that example. That was a very harsh example. I don't know much what happened back then, but I can recall little bits in this where the board decided that students that lived within the preserve weren't able to attend. The priority was outsiders. Is that what the legality was concerned?
I do not know. I was not here legal counsel, and it was a different board, so I am not aware of the facts and circumstances.
But let's be real honest, the school should have been already in construction by now. You know, it's been, what, three years? Major G, when did it pass? Three years ago. Should have been, and there is an issue, like a wise man stated, the process of a contract is like a dance. And it's difficult when there is, there's this trust issue, like I said. But the school has to start. It really does. Because uncertainty, what, three years, five years, eight years, 10 years? We can't have that either. We've got to set a parameter, and this is where, this is how it goes. So people can start preparing, planning to live in the community. So that means a lot. So we've got to start that process.
District staff has heard you loud and clear.
Yeah.
And when the board said to go, the district staff moved.
Yeah.
We went through the schedule of how we spent the 1.5, $6 million, and all the steps that we went through in order to get you a school. So it's going to happen. Unfortunately, when the legislature has nothing to do, they write more laws to govern school districts. And that's what we're working our way through, all 12 pages of it.
Mrs. Gagne?
Yes, I think just to be solutions-oriented moving forward, you know, I would request that the district, as we meet major milestones, communicates with preserve parents. I think part of the problem, and I really, I don't like the legal drama, I'm a lawyer, I'm not into litigation, I don't want to cost the district money litigating, so all of that aside, I just want to see some communication that as milestones are met, it's just clear this is happening. So some of the communication I got was basically, "My school's not coming." And then I was like, "Oh, it is," and they're like, "Okay." So that was part of it, is just there hasn't been communication. And when there's not communication, people start to think, "Well, if we're not hearing anything, then it's nothing happening." So I would just ask that as we do hit milestones, that we are just more communicative. You know, I know that we do a fairly good job of updating our website about things. It might be helpful if we had some dedicated space to, as we hit milestones, what's happening. For example, some of the state approval stuff, you know, there's these very broad timelines on this, and if we're able to move more efficiently, that's a win for us. So why not communicate that that process went even more quickly? So that's a solution to the problem of lack of communication. So let's focus on that. Thank you.
Mr. Knopf?
A while back, when we had important decisions to make, we often had, our staffs would visit the community and had a meetings, and it was very effective. So I'd like to ask Dr. Enfield, whether it could be a bimonthly or every quarter, I'd like to have our staffs go to preserve community and have, present a meeting as to the process and progress of a preserve to a school. Thank you, Dr. Enfield. Okay.
The only comment I'm going to make is surrounds my concern with the whole, with the whole project. And it mostly is centered on the purchase agreement. I will remind the board that one of our main focuses and main obligations to this district, to our constituents and to our taxpayers, is a fiduciary responsibility. And for us to enter into a contract that you're telling us isn't legal, isn't in our best interest, is not fulfilling that fiduciary responsibility. Also remind my colleagues that we represent the entire district, not just one section. So when we make these decisions, we need to make the decisions that are going to, yes, affect that small area, but also make decisions that are going to be in the best interest of the entire district, all 27,000 students plus. So with that, Mr. Tyus, thank you for your presentation and for your time. And Dr. Enfield, will this be available on our website, the slides?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now moving on to Item 1D, comments from employee representatives. I see Mr. Danny Hernandez, so let's go ahead and start with him.
Good evening, President Schaefer, board members, Dr. Enfield, and Cabinet.
Danny, we can't hear you. Can you, is there a way you can turn the volume up or speak into the microphone?
Is that any better?
No, unfortunately, it's not. Is it on our end, Dr. Enfield?
I'm not sure.
How about now?
Yeah, give us just a second there, Mr. Hernandez, we're going to check and see if it's on our end.
Okay, thank you.
Is Ms. Walker with us? Mrs. Bearden?
It's very light.
Danny, can you speak again?
Yes, can you guys hear me at all?
Try it again.
Can you hear me now?
It's like a bad commercial. Okay, in the interim, Mr. Hernandez, please stand by, Mrs. Bearden.
Good evening, President Schaefer, school board members, Dr. Enfield, Cabinet, and Chino Valley Community. It is so nice to see you in person this evening. I'm excited to be here tonight because I have the privilege of recognizing two of our very own graduating seniors who applied for a CHAMP scholarship. First, I'd like to congratulate Riley Shuler. She is Mr. Kyle Shuler's daughter. Riley graduated from Ayala High School last week. Riley is described as determined, hardworking, passionate, goal-driven, and kind. These outstanding qualities helped her succeed in school and the various activities she participated in while at Ayala. While maintaining excellent grades, Riley was on the cheer team all four years, competed on the competitive cheer team, as well as stunt club. In addition to cheer, she served as a member of the Renaissance class all four years and served as president this year. Riley will attend Concordia University in the fall, where she was recruited for the cheer and stunt team, and will work towards a degree in kinesiology. It's remarkable how nervous I am, I'm not used to being in person. Another remarkable graduating senior is Stephen Cabrera, Dr. Kimberly Cabrera's son. Stephen also just graduated from Don Lugo High School. Stephen is described as enthusiastic, tenacious, motivated, and optimistic. These characteristics help define him as a leader on and off the field. Stephen was a four-year member of the track and football teams, as well as a member of the wrestling team for a season. It was typical for Stephen to be the last one at an event, ensuring the field was left in better condition than he found it. Isn't that what we want all our kids to do? In addition to being involved in sports, Stephen was a leadership student, serving the school as a junior class secretary, and most recently, ASB vice president. We look forward to hearing about his continued accomplishments at Western Oregon University, where he will run track and explore whether law enforcement or teaching are his calling. We are incredibly proud to honor both of these students with a CHAMP scholarship. Based on their successes in high school, they are both destined to be successful in their future endeavors. Thank you for your time, and have a great night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And yes, congratulations to Ms. Shuler and Mr. Cabrera. Mr. Hernandez? Oh, we lost, there he is. Wow, that's like a magic trick there, Danny.
I figured I was here, I might as well run over. I heard it was on my end, so I wasn't sure how to fix it, but I'm here.
Well, welcome.
Thank you. Real quick, I wanted to start off by thanking or congratulating all of the graduates from our recent graduations. Looking at them online with the presentations from each one of the schools, they did an excellent job with short notice, the elementaries and junior highs. Great job. Throughout the year, I've highlighted classified employees in different classifications from our nutrition services department, our technology department, our transportation, and our M&amp;O. They've all done an outstanding job. Each year, I believe it was the last month, at the end of the last month, we usually have an unsung hero, an award we give out to people that go above and beyond. I can say that without all of us, classified, certificated, Dr. Enfield, your cabinet, managers, supervisors, we would not be where we are right now. There are a few different departments, or two different departments that I do want to highlight. We all see our PPEs, our hand sanitizers, Plexiglas. Those things did not just magically appear. They had to be ordered. Our purchasing department went above and beyond. They purchased all these things. They didn't get to the sites by themselves. So our warehouse staff delivered them. I want to highlight a few employees, not all classified employees. Anna Hamilton, Director of Purchasing. Kathy Casino. Linda McIntyre. Saul Furman. Jonathan Rico. Then our warehouse staff. Roy Strohna. Gabriel Aguilera. Carlos Gomez. Eric Montoya. James Luhon. Steven Gonzalez Jr. Daniel Tomlinson. And Fernando Suazo. If you remember in 2019, they were our unsung hero, back, I believe it was at Woodcrest. They came out, they were our unsung hero for that year. Unfortunately, that was the last year where we were able to do it in person. For the last 15 months, we have all had concerns, issues, mostly with our safety. One thing that staff did not need to worry about, is our paychecks were always there. I know I was happy that they were there. They weren't light, they weren't inaccurate, they were there. So again, I want to highlight these individuals that make sure that we all got paid on a regular basis. That's Lisandro Maldonado. Chelsea Biggs. And I need to apologize, I know I'm going to mispronounce some names, and I probably did already. I'll start again. Lisandro Maldonado. Chelsea Biggs. Kevin Doe. Deana Leong. Jessica Kano. Terry Gap. Rosemary Cuevas. David Valdivia. Vanessa Mello. Justin Correa. And Gabby Casasolo. Those are the individuals that have all gone above and beyond. I was listening to the presentation earlier, and one of the things that I always like to hear is, and we probably don't say it enough, is a thank you. So to Dr. Enfield, board members, and Cabinet, it's a sincere thank you that we are here today in the situation that we're in, the graduations that took place, the reopening of our schools. Hopefully, next year, it's all back to normal, or our new normal. So with that, Dr. Enfield, thank you very much for your, for your hard work. There were a lot of unanswered questions when this all started, a lot of continued unanswered questions, where we're going, how we're getting there. But I do remember Grace Park. She constantly had reopening guidelines that were constantly being worked on, that started off at 36 pages, down to 34, down to 38, or up to 38, then finally stayed in a draft form. For a few months there, I think we all looked overly tired based on what we all had to do. But that hard work did not go unnoticed by everybody, not just classified, certificated, our community and our members. With that, I want to say again, thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for joining us. Okay, we're now moving on to Item 1E, comments from the audience on items not on the agenda. We're now, comments on items not on the agenda, as noted in the public advisory posted in the agenda. Email comments are longer being accepted as we have returned to in-person protocols. Pat, are there any speakers on non-agenda items?
Yes, there are.
How many?
Thirteen.
Speakers, you will be called in the order the request was received. Please listen for your name and be prepared to approach the podium. Any comments on agenda items will be accepted during consideration of that item. Once the board has commenced deliberations on an issue, speaker cards will not be accepted. The board is very interested in your comments, but please bear in mind that the board typically does not respond to comments during this time on the agenda, as it is reserved specifically for public comments. Individual members may respond during board member comments at the end. Additionally, the board does its best to support the public's right to address its elected officials. It is also important that the board conduct its business in an orderly and fair fashion, as provided in Board Billa 9323. In the event that an unusual amount of speaker cards were submitted for any item, the board will hear up to 30 minutes of comments. In the case of non-agenda items, the board can, if it chooses, hear the remainder of comments after all business has been conducted. Mr. Bridge, will you please explain the light system?
Yes. Speakers, you have three minutes to address the board, limit your remarks to new point. Begin comments at the green light. The yellow light means you have 30 seconds left. The red light means your time is over. Please adjust the microphone as necessary so that you speak directly into the mic, as I'm demonstrating now. Audience members, please refrain from making comments while speakers are at the podium. And please note that Board Policy 1312.1 outlines the procedure for anyone who wishes to file a complaint against a district employee.
The first speaker is Nicole and Ezekiel Zuniga, followed by Darice De Guzman.
It's intimidating. Hello. Thank you for giving us all a chance to speak. This is Zeke Zuniga, he is going to be a fourth grader next year. I'm speaking on behalf of my son, who attended his third grade year via distance, blended, and then modified traditional education. During his time spent in quarantine and virtual learning, his mental state declined, and he wasn't his energetic, ready, and eager-to-learn student I once had. When he started his year, we were lucky to have had a teacher who he already had for first grade. The reason I say he was lucky is because he was already so sad and upset that he couldn't go back to school, but knowing he had his favorite teacher helped significantly. He did well and even excelled virtually, but as many other students, the struggle was that students didn't log in and participate the way they would have in class. He was so happy when he found out we would be returning, even for two days a week, and then ecstatic when it went to five days. Here and now is when he decided to speak up. He wants to make a difference but doesn't know how. So I told him we could come here to speak to you all, and the board, who ultimately decides his fate for his education. He wants to express how he feels about all of the changes he faced through the last school year, and has some requests. He says, "My name is Ezekiel. Thank you for allowing me this chance. Please have no Plexiglas when we go back, because it's hard to see sometimes. Please have no more realms or zones, because I want to be able to see and play with all of my friends again, not just the ones in my class. Please do not go back to distance learning, because you don't get to see people in person, and it's better to learn in person. Also, masks are hard to breathe and play with them on. Please make it to where we don't have to wear them anymore. Thank you for your time, Nicole and Ezekiel Zuniga."
Darice De Guzman?
Thank you. Good evening, board members and superintendent. My name is Darice De Guzman. I have three kids currently in the school district, one in high school, one in junior high, and one in special education elementary. You may have seen him sitting with me back there. I've sent a few emails to you over the past few weeks, but haven't received a response, so felt these issues were important. so felt these issues were important enough to present tonight. I've lived in the Chino Preserve area for the past 13 years, and was there two years ago when you approved to move forward with building the school for the preserve. We've seen very little progress, and as Ms. Gagne mentioned, very little, if none, communication. It's time that we set a goal and set a timeline to get our second school built. With this second school, we would have the space to bring back SDC classes and give the students that deserve the most ability to go to school in their own community with their neighborhood peers. Second, I'd like to address the Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant that was approved on May 20th. Numerous parents of our district and parents in the LCAP have acknowledged that they did not provide input to the plan that was approved, which was a requirement for the grant. I submitted a public records request on May 23rd, finally received a response 10 minutes before I arrived today. I did take a look at the participation list, very few parents were included during those meetings. The plan to add an additional 30 minutes across all levels will not address specific needs, which is the intent of the grant. For high school and junior high, it adds additional stress as many of these students have responsibilities, jobs, and extracurricular activities outside of school. This plan provides less time for homework and mental rest. The current plan lacks specific details on how it will be executed and the utilization of the funds in comparison to other districts. One, extending instructional learning time. Instead of adding 30 minutes to the school day across all levels, other districts are providing options such as summer school sessions. Section two, our district's plan is to provide intervention teachers at elementary sites and paraprofessionals. I'd like to ask how will this be implemented? As of last week, my son was denied additional support at his annual IP, although the entire IP team acknowledged that he did not meet his goals and needs to, and needs support to complete tasks throughout the day. Other districts are offering one-on-one tutoring, small group intervention, and for high schools, small group AP tutoring. Section three, there was nothing written in the district's plan to address this, but yet we plan to spend 3.4 million according to the plan. Sections four, five, and six were not addressed in the district's plan. If you compare our plan to other districts, you can see where we fell short on providing a plan that addresses the intent of the grant, which is to help students with learning gaps. Study sessions, working groups should have been conducted with parents and teachers so that we can work collaboratively with transparency and open communication together to develop a plan that really works for students.
My time has expired.
And focuses sport on those with that need it most. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sonia Shaw, followed by Brandon Gomez.
Thank you for allowing parents to voice our concerns at tonight's meeting. I speak on behalf of many and have spent many hours listening to the concerns of this community. I'm here tonight to share not only my concerns, but those of our children. We have three major concerns to bring to you this evening. It has come to our attention in this community that critical race theory and the controversial 1619 project may enter into schools. We protest to any curriculum being introduced that further divides our children and is based on incorrect historical facts. Teaching children that there are only two groups, the dominant white groups who oppress and the minorities who are oppressed, is not only divisive but incorrect. All social and cultural issues do not revolve around race. Teaching children that they are the oppressors or the oppressed does nothing good for either party. They group all individuals together and talk nothing about self-responsibility into account. We understand that federal grants being offered to teach these programs are available, and the teachers' union back up the equity curriculum, it's even on their website, and we as parents will make it known tonight and every night that we do not support this at all. Second, the mask mandate. As parents watching our children have to wear masks every day for hours to attend school is beyond what science suggests. Science never backed any research that children were at high risk for COVID, and we still made our children wear masks to comply with the district's rules. If individuals wish to continue to wear the masks or whatever their reasons are, that's clearly their choice. To continue to mandate it for all is an abuse of your power and you have no research to back up your decision. We as parents are making it very clear and loudly, with all due respect, drop the mask mandate or find data to back it, because we will go through the legal channels, and we have no problem doing that without good, and without good cause, data and research, you will have nothing to stand on. Thirdly, us parents are extremely concerned that you, we were not given any choice to voice our opinions in regards to the additional time added to the school year. We are keenly aware that the district was able to secure a grant with the loss of education during COVID. Adding 30 minutes to the school day is, in our opinion, is not good use of that grant money. There are two separate concerns to be clear. One, we did not have any input, that impacts us greatly, and two, we would like to have input in future decisions that the district makes which impacts our children. Adding 30 minutes to the days may seem not like a lot to you guys as board members who do not have young children, but it indeed pushes everything into the afternoon and early evenings, causing mental stress in our children that is not needed. Other districts have utilized this money in different ways, in ways that make more sense than simply at slapping on a five-minute, five-minute extra to the 30, to the 30-minute mandate. We wish our voices were more, were heard in this. With that being said, we ask the Board of Education and Superintendent to consider allowing a committee of parents to be part of a major decision-making process. We ask you consider the value of our opinions, remembering that the children you teach and that you're in control of are the same ones that we call our sons and daughters. We appreciate your time and consideration, and we hope that we work closely together in the future.
Thank you.
Brandon Gomez, followed by Bernadette Mendez.
Thank you for the board, and for superintendent for allowing me to speak briefly. My name is Brandon Gomez. My wife and I have lived in the Chino Valley our whole lives, and we both attended CBUSD schools, kindergarten through 12th grade. We have three children, two of which also attended K-12 within the district. Our youngest daughter is going into sixth grade at Hidden Trails Elementary. Tonight I wanted to express my objection to the potential incorporation of critical race theory, which has often veiled under the 1619 project, ethnic studies, social justice, or equity and sensitivity curriculum. Some of you may not even be aware of what CRT is. CRT is the view that institutions, including school districts, are inherently racist and race itself, instead of being biological, is a social construct used by white people to further interests, to further their interests at the expense of colored people. As a person of color, I take great offense to that view. CRT is more than just an attempt at social justice for people of color. It's an ideology that is meant to divide society by the color of our skin. If you think our nation is divided now, once our schools indoctrinate our kids with this distorted worldview, our country would be headed for an irreparable future. In a recent letter to the Biden administration, over 150 former U.S. generals expressed their concern of the building popularity of CRT. They explained that this is typically textbook Marxism, as those ideologies take root in our institutions and schools. They were trained specifically to identify those markers when facing other countries that were in peril, and now they see it happening right here in the U.S. If you want to learn more about CRT, I highly recommend you read from socioeconomic scholars like Thomas Sowell, Jason Riley, Shelby Steele, and Bodie Baucham. If you don't have time to read their books, look up some clips, there's many of them on YouTube, most of which are by people of color. I want to leave you with a quote from former slave Frederick Douglass. In speaking to white America in 1863, he said, "The American people have always been anxious to know what they shall do with us. Do nothing with us. Your interference is doing us positive injury." I want to assure you that we will diligently follow up to prevent the teaching of this destructive ideology in our schools, and if found in our curriculum, we will pull our kids out and homeschool them, and there's hundreds of us that'll do the same. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Bernadette Mendez, followed by Charles Chamorro.
Dear Board of Education and Superintendent Enfield, first and foremost, we the parents of Chino Valley Unified School District thank the board and superintendent Enfield for your efforts to prioritize our students' education as we look ahead to the next school year. It is important that all stakeholders participate in the discussion of the various issues that will need to be dealt with. We write this letter endorsed by 108 concerned parents and stakeholders to ask that you begin to include the public in these discussions before moving forward with decisions regarding the 2021-2022 school year. Thus far, parents have not been part of any decision-making processes that affect the lives of our students. Much discussion focuses on students losing time and learning as a result of distance learning. Around the beginning of May, some parents were made aware that there would be a vote on an ELO grant to address this issue. No information, data, or evidence was presented to parents to support that a 30-minute increase of instruction each day would be the most effective or beneficial solution to support students moving forward. While ELO information is posted on a board meeting agenda on the Chino Valley Unified School District website, many parents were not aware that this information existed. Through informal conversations with district teachers and employees regarding this issue, information that lacked detail and general confusion spread among the community as a result. Posting pertinent information without parent notice in another form, email, phone blasts, et cetera, could be construed as the board's and/or superintendent's purposeful intention to avoid and discount stakeholder input and to minimize the value of this community. The perceived lack of transparency negates Chino Valley Unified School District's mission that united together the Chino Valley Unified School District staff, parents, guardians, community, and governing board work to provide all students a rigorous and relevant education in a safe and learning environment. We, parents and stakeholders of Chino Valley Unified School District and this community, ask the board and superintendent Enfield to begin study sessions immediately for the public as seen in summer 2020. We ask that the district administer surveys to all stakeholders, asking for input and feedback as seen in summer 2020. We ask for transparency from the board and superintendent Enfield so that we can come together to discuss effective and equitable solutions to meet the needs of all students in this district. If our priority is our children and their education, our processes and practices must continue to reflect just that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Chamorro, followed by Marissa Lippen.
Good evening, members of the board and everyone else present. Thank you so much, Ms. Gagne, for responding to my emails, and thank you attorney for the presentation. And I am just here to echo the sentiment of my fellow residents of the Preserve at Chino who feel like all this legal scaldruggery about building our second school, it makes us feel like it's a way of getting us marginalized by the district despite being the one of the highest-paying zip codes as far as property taxes and Melrose is concerned, and our kids are the highest scorers as far as testing goes in the city of Chino, and we have a high rating in our school, and we're going to have a second school with another high rating compared to other schools. But as far as now, our kids have the worst situation as far as lack of facilities is concerned. We're the only school with four tracks where kids take turns in using the classroom with strange schedules, you know, they can't play with their friends who are in, you know, in other tracks. This does not add up to what we're contributing. We are, we're not asking for special favors, we're merely asking for what is fair and what has been already paid for by our, you know, hard work, tax-paying residents. We teach our kids that in life, you get what you pay for, however, we need to prove it to them. Okay, so build our second school, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marissa Lippen, followed by Lorraine Harris.
Good evening, Dr. Enfield, board members and staff. I have a few concerns I would like to address this evening. To start, one is the COVID learning recovery plan. Based on my research, I have not seen or been provided with any parent committee meeting minutes or agendas showing parents have had any real impact on how the $70 million will be allocated. I am here to ask for a new parent committee to be formed in order to help design, implement these funds for learning loss. I believe that one parent per school site would make a perfect committee. I would like to ask the board to address these following concerns. How will you provide assessments to all students? Will you provide extra support for special education? How will the 30 extra minutes be allotted in the classroom? Are you providing on, are you providing more intervention teachers or more support staff per site? Will there be one-on-one help provided? Will you be focusing this time on reading, writing, and math resources? If the funds are not utilized for the above items, then you are not helping our children with learning loss. We have not seen a breakdown on exactly how all the items will be done by the district using the money and the extra time. It sounds like these funds are going to be used for our teachers' bonuses, not helping our children with learning that they have lost over the past year. We as parents want to make your job easier and do what is best for our children. I ask that you add a parent oversight committee to help allocate the funds in the most beneficial way. My second concern is the new bell schedule. Once again, this was not brought up to any parent's attention or voted on by parents. There is a complete lack of communication that needs to be addressed. My three children attend an elementary school, and with the new bell schedule, they will not be dismissed until 3:40. That is extremely late in the day for a young child. Studies show that children do better in the morning than they do in the afternoon. You are asking six and 11-year-olds to focus longer in the afternoon, which we all know is not an easy task. Even as adults, we struggle being productive after 3:00 p.m. After-school activities are just as important as school. They help build a sense of community, build confidence, team-building, social and emotional stability, and overall happiness in our children's lives. I will let you know now that there will be multiple families, including my own, pulling their children from school early a few days a week if the schedule does not change. This would result in the district and school sites losing those funds. So I would like to request that the new bell schedule for elementary schools that aren't already starting at this time be revised to start at 8 o'clock or 8:05 and dismiss at 3:10 or 3:15. This will move the 30-minute learning loss time in the morning, where kids are more alert, and will increase learning and engagement among teachers and peers. These are a few items the board can show to the community that they care and are listening to the parents and the children, and they, and that we would like this all to be addressed. Thank you so much.
Lorraine Harris, followed by Daniella Bland.
Today, you have heard from several members and their concerns with the lack of parent input in decisions, especially with the use of the COVID learning recovery funds. We are a part of the Parent Association, chapter of Chino Valley. We are the voices of over 750 parents, and we're growing every day. We are advocating for our students and empowering parents to speak up and work with the district to make positive change. The Parent Association is a diverse group of parents who all want the same thing for our, for our children, high-quality public schools that put students' needs first. We are a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization focused on helping parents advocate for the things that matter most, academic achievement, physical health, and the social and emotional well-being of all students in our public schools. The Parent Association of Chino Valley is composed of parents who are concerned and active in making all efforts to ensure that the decisions of the Chino Valley Unified School District are in the best interest of the educational process and the content of our children. We love our teachers and our school staff. They are our neighbors, our friends, and our children's mentors. Teachers are the essential workers we depend on to provide our children a quality education. At the Parent Association, we seek ways to support teachers while making sure the needs of students are the number-one priority of our schools and our schools' district, school districts. We support our school district leadership by being knowledgeable and informed and more involved. We will confidently and respectfully make our superintendent, board members, and principals aware of how their decisions impact our children and our families. We will effectively and vigorously advocate for policies that improve academic achievement, physical health, and the social and emotional well-being of students. There is no better advocate for our students than a parent. The Parent Association is the group that brought a lawsuit against the California Department of Health and Governor Newsom that allowed all schools in California to open full-time in person. They are the group that got all of the California guidance changed to reasonable rules and allowed our kids to attend school in person full-time, and we owe them a huge debt of gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you.
The final speaker, Daniella Bland.
My name is Daniella Bland. My son is half and mixed and currently attending school in the Chino District. It has come to our attention in this community the critical race theory, ethnic studies, social justice, equity, and sensitivity curriculum. that critical race theory, ethnic studies, social justice, equity, and sensitivity curriculum and the controversial sixteen-nineteen project may enter into the schools. We vehemently protest to any curriculum being introduced to further divide our children and is based on incorrect historical facts. Teaching children that there are only two groups, the dominant white groups who oppress and the minorities who are oppressed, is not only divisive but incorrect. All social and cultural issues do not revolve around race. Teaching children that are the oppressors or the oppressed does not do good for either party. These curriculums go against all traditional definitions of true stereotyping. The group, they group all individuals together and take nothing about self-responsibility into account. We vehemently reject any such curriculum being taught in schools and will take a stand against any and all of it. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you. You said that was the final speaker?
That was the final speaker.
Okay, because I only have nine down. I thought there were thirteen.
Well, there's, I'm counting the ones on the agenda.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. My bad.
I'm sorry, I had filled out a speaker card for the general comments, but it is regarded in school. Is that just being moved to the school item? Or we weren't, I wasn't planning on talking about the environmental, so that's why.
Brian Goodman.
Yes.
It says preserve school.
It said not agenda item.
Yeah. Do you want to hear it now?
That's fine. No, come take your three minutes, sir.
My apologies for the miscommunication there. Good evening. I'm Brian Goodman, representing the Lewis Companies, and appreciate you hearing our side. Unfortunately, three minutes is not much to rebut some of the things that we heard today. But I do want to make it very, very clear that we appreciate staff moving forward and accomplishing all the tasks to date. There's no doubt that there's been a lot of work done. I also want to reiterate that we do want to move forward with selling the land. We do want to move forward. We do not at all want arbitration. That, there's no one who wins in arbitration but attorneys, so we really would like to avoid that. I know you all received a copy of a letter from Randall Lewis. I hope you have a chance to read it thoroughly. There's a proposal in there. I'll try and describe it a little bit more now, but obviously don't have a lot of time to do so. At the end of the day, we believe we'd be doing a disservice to our community and the residents if we don't have some form of accountability on actually moving forward with construction. It's not a trust issue. This is something that we actually do in all of our transactions. Dozens and dozens of transactions have a repurchase agreement. We just did one with the city of Eastvale. We do them with all of our guest builders. To say it's illegal is actually ridiculous. Mr. Tao's previous law firm just did one with us in Ontario about eighteen months ago with the Mountain View School District. In all of our previous meetings, he's never said it's illegal. He's only said, "Well, if you do it, we need a discount to the purchase price because it's not fair market value." It was the first time we heard it was illegal tonight, and we've been negotiating this for how long? That is very disturbing. We also did not address the fact that we made a separate proposal. Save your money. Don't put it in escrow. Just wait until you get all your plan approvals, then deposit the money, and then close escrow, and then move forward when you're ready. We're more than happy to wait until all of the plan approvals are done. This is not a gotcha, "We don't want to buy the site back." Why would we ever want to buy the site back? All we want is a school. Our residents want a school, and we think that they deserve a minor, minor commitment. I wanted also clarify the fact, and I think Mr. Cruz did a good job of it, but all we're asking is to start construction. You don't have to finish construction. Don't even have to open it. This is a minor, minor commitment. Construction is defined as trenching foundations and starting to pour them. That's it. This is a very, very low bar that we're asking for. If that doesn't work, we still have another alternative, and we still haven't heard why that doesn't work either. We think our residents deserve this, and we really ask for your consideration. We do not want to get into arbitration. That is a huge mistake. Please listen to your constituents.
Okay, sir, thank you for your comments. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, President Schaefer, Pat, you know, I would make a motion if it was possible that our gentleman can rebuttal. Is that possible?
No. It was a presentation to the board for the board's information, and it was not.
As long as the rules are rules.
Okay, thank you to all of our speakers for providing comments this evening. So we are now at changes and deletions. Yeah, the other three on agenda item. Is what she said, yeah.
You have two on item two, excuse me, three on item two A one, and you have two on two D one, which are marked Building Preserve Number Two School and General Comments Preserve School Two, and they're both marked incorrectly, but the topic is the Preserve Two School, so I put it with the action item.
Okay, thank you. Moving on now to item one F, changes and deletions. We're not changes, deletions. Pat, do you have any changes and deletions this evening?
None.
Thank you. Moving on to section two, action items. First action item this evening will be item two A one. Request for determination to put item on agenda. Recommend the Board of Education determine if board member Andrew Cruz's request to place an item on the agenda to lift the mask-wearing mandate for the health and well-being of students and staff is under the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Education. Were there any comments, Pat?
We have three speakers. The first speaker is Kristin Kim, followed by Crystal Barrett.
Good evening, everyone. I am here as a mom of two elementary school students, a six- and a nine-year-old, who attend Cortez Elementary. I would like to address some issues concerning the health and well-being of our children. I am fully aware that there are some restrictions and they're necessary back in the beginning of the pandemic. I'm also aware that things have gotten much better in recent months in addition to more updated information coming from our national level and state level. However, they have once again failed to consider our children. As everyone knows, we are coming close to reopening fully, but in the beginning, the lack of concern of our children's mental and emotional well-being has become apparent. We need to do better for our kids. Please consider removing the masks from our children. Please allow this to be optional. There's no concrete reason why anyone, especially ages three to twelve, should be forced to wear a mask. Now, given the current vaccination rates, how does it make sense to still enforce children, knowing everything we know now? How will these kids get or spread COVID if seventy to eighty percent of the adults that are around are vaccinated or have had COVID already? Even worse, how is it okay to make my six-year-old wear a mask outside in ninety-degree weather at recess? And how does that even make sense when the likelihood of transmission outdoor for a child is point zero 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 seven percent? That's eight zeros, then a seven. I urge you to be the voice of reason for my six-year-old little girl who is telling me she can't breathe, and my nine-year-old little boy who wants to be able to learn inside the classroom without his glasses fogging up. Please do not let this go on any longer than it needs to. These kids were never at risk for severe complications, and they are definitely not at risk now. If a personal has a personal preference to wear one, by all means, they should be allowed to wear one. But it should definitely not be our new normal to require our childrens to wear them. I have below some things my six-year-old daughter and nine-year-old son have said after a full day of school of wearing masks. "The mask gave me a headache. I felt like I was going to throw up a few times. They made me wear my mask outside even though no one was near me. I sneezed inside my mask, and it got all nasty, so I didn't want to wear it because it was wet. I can't breathe with my mask on. The teacher couldn't hear me through the mask. I dropped my mask on the bathroom floor, so I had to find a new one. I don't like recess because I have to wear my mask, and it's already hot outside, and it makes me more hot." I understand that you feel that you are in the discretion of the public health officials, but there are quite a few schools in the state and even county that do not enforce masks during recess or have those ridiculous Plexiglas dividers. This telling masks and other precautions are not enforced at the same level across the board, and the discretion falls to the individual school districts. As we know, the situation with COVID was a very fluid situation. However, the numbers and facts fifteen months later are a clear indication that these children have been and are very unlikely to contract and spread the virus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Crystal Barrett, followed by the final speaker, Marissa Lippin.
Hi, you guys. My name is Crystal Barrett. I am a mother of two kids, a ten-year-old and a three-year-old. So I want to start by painting you guys a picture of my son Dylan, who attends Liberty Elementary. Dylan has always been one of the top kids in his class. He's an athlete. He's a leader. He's helpful. He's a rule follower. And he loves school. He loves school. He loves his teachers. He loves his friends. He actually used to ask me, "Mom, is it normal that I love school so much?" But let's fast forward to this year. He was so excited school was going back because, like I said, he loved school. But every day this year when I went to pick him up, he would get in my car, rip off his mask, and break down in tears. He's angry. He's frustrated. He's anxious just thinking about school. Every day is the worst day ever, he would tell me. He says that he would have to go out to recess and hide so he can pull his mask all the way down to get a fresh breath of air, but would quickly be yelled at by the principal or new nades on the playground. During class, he had to pretend he was drinking water because he felt like he was going to pass out, and he needed to take a deep breath, but quickly got yelled at by the teacher. Do you guys not understand how much stress and anxiety these masks are placing on our children? They are actually causing more issues than they are resolving. I can stand here and quote you guys article after article after article stating how ineffective these masks are, but I encourage you to do your research. Ask the children how they are feeling with them. But my question to you is, are you guys training your teachers to only, are you training your teachers to only make sure that the kids are wearing the masks correctly? Or are you training your teachers to look for signs or ask questions? Why are you wearing your mask down? Why are you pulling your mask down? How are you feeling? Do you feel like you're going to pass out? Do you need water? Do you need a break? We send our kids to you guys every single day in full faith that you were looking out for their best interests, but instead, you guys are causing so much stress and anxiety that our kids have never endured in their whole entire life. You are stressing them out more than protecting them. Now, I am a heartbroken mother that has a child that not only hates school, but has unnecessary stress, anxiety, emotional damage over something you could have prevented, and now I'm paying for counseling for my child. Something else COVID has taught me is that school days can be completed online in a couple hours, right? And now you want to extend hours for, let's be honest, your own personal benefits? We need to stop being selfish and start putting these kids first. These kids are our future. This is the age that we are supposed to getting them excited for their future, but instead, all you are doing is stealing fear, doubt, reservations, and you are creating emotional and mental messes out of our children. So I'm going to end with this. The definition of liberty means the equality or state of being free, the power to do as one pleases, the freedom of physical restraint, and I can only hope and pray that this district can live up to my son's school name, Liberty Elementary. Thank you for your time.
Marissa Lippin.
Again, good evening. It is time to end the mask mandate for our children. I know some of you have stated before that you would remove the mandate if you could. This is your chance to make a difference in our community and our children's well-being. There's plenty of evidence that state masks do not work. Some of the evidence comes straight from Dr. Fauci. He has stated before in emails and on media outlets that masks are not effective in stopping the spread of COVID-19. In an email dated February 2020, I quote, "Masks are really for infected people to prevent spreading infection to people who are not infected rather than protecting uninfected people from acquiring infection. The typical mask you buy at the drugstore is not really effective in keeping out the virus," end quote. Have you ever read the side of the packaging of your mask that it comes in? If you haven't, I will read it to you now. Quote, big bold letters, "Warning: This product is an ear-lute mask. This product is not a respirator. It will not provide any protection against COVID-19, coronavirus, or any other viruses or contaminants." So tell me why we are asking masks, having our kids wear masks? And again, science is telling us that there is no evidence. Have you considered, have you considered the COVID deaths for children in California ages zero to eighteen? As of May 29th, the Californian Department of Health stated that children ages zero to five, there has been four deaths. In children ages five to eighteen, there's been nineteen. That is a total of twenty-three deaths in the state of California. If you compare this to the 2017-2018 flu season in children ages zero to four, there was an estimated one hundred and fifteen deaths. In children ages five to seventeen, there was an estimated five hundred and twenty-eight. That is a total of six hundred and forty-three deaths. There were six hundred and twenty more deaths during the flu season than we have seen in the last year of COVID. So why are we masking, social distancing, and sanitizing for an illness that is less deadly? As I have stated above, there is not enough evidence for our children to be masked up to six to eight hours a day. I understand that the district is worried about learning loss for our children, and that is the main focus for next year. But as a mother, I can tell you my children's health and well-being is my top priority. These masks are creating barriers between our children, their peers, and teacher. My daughter spoke at the last board meeting, and after she was done, the one thing she said would have happened is that you guys would have taken off your masks so she could have seen your facial expressions during her speech. She continued to say that it would have given her more confidence during her speech and helped her be calmer. These masks are desensitizing the human race, especially our children. I can see that the board is concerned about appealing to parents that are pro-mask and anti-mask. I feel the best way to appease both sides is to grant a mass choice for 21-22 school year. This will give parents, parents the power to choose for their child. Every family in our district has different circumstances, and giving the choice back to the families is the right thing to do.
Thank you for your comments. Your time has expired.
We, as parents, want nothing more but best for our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a motion, please.
So moved, second.
The motion by Mr. Na and the second by Mr. Cruz. Comments, questions, or discussion from the board? Mr. Cruz.
You know, you know, to, you need to have courage for the unknown. It's as simple as that. I cannot think it's because we're following some person that tells us that our children have to wear masks, so we follow that person. But you know, I was, I was helping a friend of mine, and she had an assignment about an example of groupthink mentality. And I did some reflection. It happened on Friday. So I'm going to do my very best to give an example of this, and this is similar to the mask. So let me go ahead and begin. First, let's say a person has asthma. Doctor says go to the ER only when you have severe breathing problems. The doctor does not give no prophylactic medication to be used. The rise of the groupthink, media and academia organizations. First quarter of 2020, Americas were introduced the word PPE. Nothing to do with sick patients. Fear is the primary objective for behavioral response. Second, the media displays two outcomes continuously. Positive cases and death. Ongoing, ongoing, ongoing. My dad goes to the hospital, so what do I think in my mind? I better get him out of the hospital because he's going to die, because that's what was happening. So it took six days. He came home. That's all I was thinking, because that's what was occurring. So once you go to the hospital, you never see your loved ones again. On top of that, health workers are terrified. They take extraordinary measures to distance themselves because everybody's afraid. First time this happened, they shut down travel. Fear is the goal. Okay, so we learned early about COVID-19 had three biological features. It replicated exponential, same as any other virus. The present immune system attacks organs, and the spike protein causes blood clots. The strongest determination of mortality is age, and comorbidities such as obesity was huge, heart failure, lung disease. Individuals under the age of fifty with no major medical problems recovered with no problems. It was an issue with people that were over the age of fifty. That's when you had these issues. So what was the problem? We had to stop the hospitalization and death. They never treated the virus. That did not happen. The average person sat home for two weeks, no start diagnosis, no start treatment, no prevention, hospitalization. The average person sat home for two weeks, no start diagnosis, no start treatment, no prevention of hospitalization, no prevention of death. However, there were brave doctors, independent from academia agencies, that were finding different ways because they had the courage to find treatments. Because they were experimenting, because we knew the last resort was these people are going to die. So they did things. The, the doctor from New York started to use hydroquinone, ivermectin, inhalers. So the medical response. First time we had an infection disease where the medical community, the groupthink mentality, supported by CDC, FDA, NIH, told doctors, "Let patients stay home, let them get sick as humanly as possible, and when they can't breathe anymore, they go to the hospital." No treatment of the virus. They became super-spreaders from home to the hospital. So October 20, NIH treatment guidelines, you get sick at home, don't do anything. Wait when you're really you can't breathe, go to the hospital until the patient needs oxygen, and start doing something. That's fourteen days later. Virus has already been replicated. Fear and really strange stuff. Fear in the early stages. But yet there was brave doctors that were independent, finding ways to treat people outpatient of COVID. And there was consequences. Some of them had their license revoked and, and their reputation and so forth. Doing what doctors were supposed to do. The brave and the courageous to, that's what doctors are supposed to do, is to heal people, not to scare away, not lau fear, and listening to these agencies, not to do anything. So we noticed that there was a earlyness of hydroquinone, ivermectin, steroids, aspirin. But then a fake prestigious journal on hydroquinone banned hydroquinone, ivermectin. Now, I have hydroquinone. I have to go out another route because my doctor won't give it to me. So actually, I take it once a week because I'm thinking to myself, this may even help me with my flu and so forth. So I take it once a week. So, no treatment for COVID outpatients, suppression of early treatments. Six hundred thousand people died. No early treatment. And you know what's so odd about this? And that is that that people that didn't have the privilege or that were poor minorities, overall, anybody in general, died because they didn't have those opportunities to go have a doctor be innovative and find different ways to cure these people. Well, and you know, on top of it, no weekly update vaccine safety, no promotion of early treatments, no weekly updates on treatment innovations. And at the same time, you have something called Algenarom, monocle antibodies. You never hear that in the media. All you hear is a vaccine, vaccine, and they're pushing it really hard. And you know, four thousand people have died, ten thousand hospitalization, and you know, there was a study that was done for swine flu. And if you have twenty-five to few people that die from this, that die in, in this trial, it's closed. It's completely closed. So I bring this up because this is a group mentality thinking of doing something that was really, history's going to show what they have done was sort of, um, it just, it's pretty sad. Pretty sad. It had to have been courageous people, brave men, that went out of the box because they loved their patients. And so same goes with the mask. It doesn't do any good. And this board here needs to have courage to go against the establishment because at the local level, that's where we can protect our children because we're at that level. Government has failed. And those three newspaper ads that I placed early, government kills more than anything else. So you know, I don't know if this is going to get voted, because you need to be, you need to have courage. You really do. Wearing the mask is abusive mentally and physically, especially our children. And I just hope that some of you have the br, courage enough to make local, this is, this is our job. It's our job now. Imagine that you're a doctor and you're going to do the best for our children. And I just hope, so rather than listening to, to the high officials telling us that our children have to wear masks and all that, I just hope you do the right thing. Thank you.
Mr. Na?
Yeah, I'd just like to, ah, my gosh, this is one of the best meetings I ever had for the last few years. We had so much of good input, good speakers, good parents, and, and students alike. Uh, and I appreciate that, and I really believe in, especially talking to medical personnel. They have often lately told me that masks should be an option for, especially for little children. Now, are, the numbers are, uh, not only been going down, but the color's been changed from critical, uh, red, purple, and, and et cetera. So I think we have to look at other mental state of our children. Uh, it's mental health, physical health, everything combined. And I think this is the time that we would make a mask an optional uh, for the, uh, choices for the parents and, and children. Um, if we don't do that, again, um, we're taking away something that is very important for our children and, and our parent-to-right. So I support making it optional. Thank you.
Mrs. Gonyer?
Yes. Tonight's agenda item actually is not to lift a mask mandate or has anything to do with the implementation of a mask mandate. Tonight's agenda item is squarely around whether or not the board has the subject matter jurisdiction to do anything about masks or state public health guidelines. So, uh, whether or not anyone on this board has an opinion on mask-wearing, not mask-wearing, or anything else that's been discussed thus far on the dais, uh, the decision we're making this evening is whether or not the board has the jurisdiction to even make a decision on this item.
Thank you for that clarification. Seeing no other lights, we will go ahead and vote. All in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no?
No.
Motion fails two to three. Moving on to item two B one, Public Hearing Regarding the 2021-2022 Budget. Recommend the Board of Education conduct a public hearing regarding the 2021-2022 budget. I now give notice and open the public hearing at seven fifty-seven PM. Are there any comments, Pat?
There are none.
I now close the public hearing at seven fifty-eight PM. Moving on to item two C one, Public Hearing Regarding Local Control and Accountability Plan. Recommend the Board of Education conduct a public hearing regarding the Local Control and Accountability Plan. I now give notice and open the public meeting at seven fifty-eight PM. Are there any comments, Pat?
None.
I now close the public hearing at seven fifty-eight PM. Moving on to item two D one, Resolution 2020-2021-38. Resolution of the Board of Education of the Chino Valley Unified School District, adopting addendum to the Certified EIR for the Proposed Preserve School Number Two Project, adopting a mitigation monitoring and reporting plan and written findings pursuant to SEQA and the Education Code approving the proposed project subject to the acquisition of the site, and delegate authority to staff to execute a notice of determination for the Preserve School Number Two Project. Recommend the Board of Education adopt Resolution 2020-2021-38, addendum to the Certified EIR for the Proposed Preserve School Number Two Project, adopt a mitigation monitoring and reporting plan and written findings pursuant to SEQA and the Education Code approve the proposed project subject to the acquisition of the site, and delegate authority to staff to execute a notice of determination for the Preserve School Number Two Project. Are there any comments?
There are two speakers, Caroline Cook, followed by Jenica Kraus.
Good evening. I am a resident of the Preserve. My daughter Elise attends a Cal-Aro. I'm a first-grade teacher. Um, I am reading this letter on behalf of a Cal-Aro teacher, Mrs. Deanna Dozy. She wasn't able to make it today. I am both a teacher and parent in Chino Valley School District and am a resident in the Preserve community. My two oldest children are enrolled at Cal-Aro. I would like to address three issues. The overcrowding at Cal-Aro. As a teacher in the district, I find it unacceptable that the gap of equity within our district is so vast. I know we have declining enrollment as a district, and I'm aware that we have schools with only a few hundred enrolled and class sizes of fifteen to eighteen students. That is not equitable when Cal-Aro is at full capacity two years ago and classes are full, capping over thirty in every classroom. The decision to add portables was a temporary solution. I want to help bring to your attention that overcrowded schools directly affect a child's ability to learn and their social, emotional health. Studies show overcrowding negatively affects children's learning. The more noise, the more difficult it is for children to logistically hear details of lessons, ask to hear other questions, communicate one-on-one with the teacher, socialize in a constructive manner, and focus and pay attention. Studies show overcrowding leads to more stress in teachers and students. Overcrowded schools have less community supplies, and to be honest, where the teachers that are, um, buying these supplies is a financial strain for a teacher to purchase for thirty to thirty-six students. Overcrowding also leads to a frequency of classroom discipline issues, more conflicts, tension and time spent addressing behavior, taking away from learning. Statistics also show struggling students fall even further behind in a school with a larger class size student-teacher ratio than schools with a more balanced population. Studies show the ability to connect with students in overcrowded schools become more and more difficult, leaving our students at Cal-Aro to feel unseen or unheard in large classes with teachers who feel burned out and frustrated. We need Preserve Two built in the next eighteen to thirty-six months. Students in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year need your yes today. We need to, we need clear answers as to what our options are. Um, where will they go? Where will the younger siblings or current students go? Please provide clear answers as to where our children will go. Please build Preserve Two School before it's too late. Signed, Mrs. Deanna Dozy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenica Kraus?
Hi, good evening. Um, so I moved to the Preserve community in 2015, and that was because of the community and the schools. I have my oldest starting kindergarten this year and a younger one following in a couple of years. Cal-Aro is overcrowded. I had to wait in line just to get her registered for kindergarten, like waiting in line for Disneyland tickets when they first opened. That's ridiculous to sign up a kid for kindergarten to make sure they can go to their home community. What's going to happen next year, the following year? We're looking out at 2024 now? That just seems insane. People are moving in. That's not slowing down. So where are these kids going to go? Feels like we're back at our original timeline. In 2019, we had a three-year timeline with August twenty-two to open, and now we're looking at three years again with August of 2024? Busing a five-year-old is not an option, nor acceptable to even conceive. What about the teachers to go beyond the kids? It goes beyond that. Teachers, administrators have to track more students than is acceptable. How's that fair? How, how many kids are slipping through the cracks at Cal-Aro because the school is overcrowded and keeping up is virtually impossible for the teachers and faculty? Yet progress still isn't moving as promised several times. We're not going anywhere. The Preserve is growing in numbers, which means there'll just be more of us to stand up and demand answers. We vote, we come out, we need real answers with real progress and realistic expectations. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, Pat? Thank you very much. Okay, may I have a motion?
So moved.
And the motion by Mrs. Gonyer and the second by Mr. Na. Comments, questions, or discussion from the board? Mr. Na?
Yeah, Dr. Enfield, exactly what are we voting on, on tonight?
Let me turn that over to staff to go ahead and Mr. Stritter to take over that.
Thank you, Mr. Na. Um, we are actually, you are voting on the addendum to the Environmental Impact Report, which was fired, filed for Preserve School Number Two, and we have Barbara Hayman from Plazeworks, who is our consultant that did all this, uh, work on this, um, report, and she is online with us to hopefully be able to answer questions as long as audio is working.
No, as long as we can proceed with this in a best manner, yes. Uh, thank you. That's all.
Any other comments or questions from board? Dr. Enfield, I just have one question, probably to Mr. Strittura. Um, can you please explain exactly what the notice of determination is?
I could, but I'm going to hand that off to Barbara. She can do it a lot better than I could.
Okay.
Good evening, board members, district staff. Thank you. The notice of determination is a document that is filed with the San Bernardino County Clerk should the district approve the resolution tonight. Uh, the resolution would allow you to, uh, move forward with the project. But one, approve the SEQA document, which is an addendum to the Preserve EIR that was prepared by the city in 2003. It allows you, the-
Ma'am, we, we are having audio problems with you. If we can, we may turn it over to a Mr. Tau. We, we're having a hard time hearing you. I apologize.
Of course. Thank you. Uh, I apologize, Barbara. We can't hear you because the audio is not very loud. So a no, notice of determination is actually a document that is recorded with the county, and the purpose of the recording is to, um, uh, let the public know that you are evaluating the environmental impacts associated with the project. And, um, there's a specific checklist of items that are reviewed as part of that notice of determination. Sometimes there are challenges. Uh, that notice of determination is to make sure that anybody who has an issue uh, will come forward and let you know that there is an issue. But in this particular case, um, this is something, this addendum was requested um, by the Department of Toxic Substances Control, uh, with regards to the fact that this used to be Agland.
Is there, are there any fees associated with filing this?
Uh, there are some fees. Uh, it's just your standard recording fees. I think it's like twenty-five dollars or fifty dollars or something. Yeah.
Perfect. Any other questions from the board?
All right. Just, just so you know that we just had a public hearing, so if you had a throng of people complaining about the school, um, that's what this hearing was for. So, um, so far, no opposition.
Mr. Bridge, did you have something?
No.
Okay. Um, seeing no other questions or comments from the board, thank you, Mr. Tau.
Thank you.
Uh, we will now vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on now to section three, Consent Items. Pat, were there any speaker requests on consent items? Thank you. Board members, do we have any polls? Mr. Cruz?
No polls.
Mr. Bridge?
No poll.
Mr. Na?
I have no polls.
Pat, for the record, please let it indicate that Mrs. Gonyer left at eight oh eight PM. Thank you. And I have no polls. May I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Na, second by Mr. Bridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four to zero with one absence. Moving on now to section four, Information Items. Are there any comments or questions from the board on information items? Seeing none, we will move on to section five, Communications. We are not communications. Mr. Cruz, please.
Yeah, I've been hearing the word lack of communication, lack of communication. Yeah, we'll still vote. Three, two, thirty minutes. We choose what we want. You know, that person, the gentleman that spoke about Louis, I mean- I mean, he sounded like a good side. He sounded really legit. You know, I'm real close. I was just setting up an action item. I think people need to know if they want to open the school or not. Let them decide, you know? I think, I think people have already decided, you know, if we arbitrary. I mean, what he said was very sensible. He just wants the school to just to be built, you know? I don't know. But I tell you something, what really matters. The smallest things is what really matters. I really believe that. That's where my joy is. You just plant a little seed in a person. That is my objective. That is my purpose. It's always been my purpose. To fail is purposeful for me because my life has always been like that. And I'm very grateful because I get gratification. This is how it should be. This is how it should be because you place a seed in a person, they start thinking. So, I am doing my job. And, um, at the beginning, you know, I had to learn, but I'm becoming better and better. I guess why? Because I really don't care about myself much. I care about you now. And that is very satisfying for me. You know, some of these women talk about critical race theory. Um, it's called A B one-on-one. It may have passed today. I don't know, but they're thinking about it. It's a high school, the ethnic studies, it's a high school graduate requirement. That's what they want to do. Good news is that a lot of states are banning it. And they're correct about it. And that is, you know, it, it, it teaches people how to be racist. You know, it really does. And, you know, I can remember my dad was telling me in San Antonio, Texas, he wasn't able to swim Monday through Friday. But he was able to swim on Saturday because he wasn't allowed to. But, you know, all of us have hardships in life. But this stuff, this, 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 this is a Marcus ideologist, uh, ideology and it destroys America because it's really pointing that America's bad and we gotta destroy everything. We gotta destroy the Constitution because that's pretty much what they're planning to do, but it's not happening. Many states are banning this. You're seeing a division between states. That's what we're seeing. And eventually, we're gonna take sides. We'll probably have to move to those states. Those states that aren't wearing masks, not for enforcing vaccines. You know, it's, it's a, it's actually an ideology in the mind. That's all it is. Neither right nor wrong. You know, I want to read something to you, a famous superintendent. He wrote a book, a pamphlet. So I'm gonna read it. I'm gonna read a section. This idea of black people defining themselves as just Americans may not play well in some communities. But I suspect that deep within every black person in America is a wish that he could connect with that American dream. We've been told so much about to do so would be to place their trust in white America, an America which has a checkered past in dealing with its darker occupants. It is their historically collective and personal hurt and pain which keeps blacks from subscribing to a total American identity. It is safe to say, however, that no group or individuals has a monopoly on pain, is what blacks have endured in their time in America, more or less than that experienced by Native Americans, for instance. I know as a child and as a teenager, I've experienced my own instances of racial slights and identities. But I would venture to say that my pain is comparatively incidental and negligible to the pain of those I have met through my life. We have been victims of sexual molestation, abuse as children and teenagers. Black people are simply Americans' lasting metaphor, illustrating both the triumph and pitfalls of the American experiment. For this reason, it is imperative that blacks ins- insist on their birthright as American first. This would be symbolic step in insisting upon full inclusion in American history and in recognition of their ancestors who have shed their blood in the belief that American dream was worthy to pursue. Black people can acknowledge the fact that Americans was built on the backs of their ancestors without finding themselves stuck in the past, insisting instead that America is as much of their country as those Americans who can trace their ancestors back to the Puritans. This sense of being connected to America speaks volumes to me, especially when I begin to look back on my own racial journey. It did not begin, as I would logically assume, with a DNA test in two thousand and three, but actually began with a Newsweek essay in nineteen ninety-four on Black History Month. That was the genesis of my questioning some of the racial attitudes in America, which has exonerably resulted in my feeling of a shared American heritage. I often think that if I were asked again the question, which racial classification I would mark, I would be quite comfortable in selecting white, Hispanic, Native American, Asian, and yes, black, because I'm not one, but I am all these clas- classifications. Because with me lies of America. And the person that wrote this was our superintendent, Wayne Joseph. And so, just to say, you know, I mean, down to it, I mean, you know, Pastor King, you know, he just, he transcended. You judge a person based on their character and their deed and their content. And that's all we can do. And, you know, ninety-nine percent of us, we're all good people, living a life, working, going home, very much the same routine, just like monarch butterfly, butter, caterpillars, doing the same old thing over and over again. There's just some evil out there that wants to divide us, to destroy us, especially to destroy America. And, you know, the ethnic studies, you know, that's part of it. A lot of factors. But, um, people are opening up and realizing this. So that's good because good is gonna end. Good is gonna win at the end. Thank you.
Mr. Na?
Yes, uh, again, I thank, uh, all the speakers that, who had come and spoke to us, um, presented us with important issues. Uh, let me talk about the CRT theory on my side, uh, my perspective. I still remember, uh, just recently that, uh, maybe a year ago, our, uh, teacher from Chino Hills High School, Mr. David Browning. He had left us and, and I was able to attend his celebration of life. And there, he left a, in one sentence, "For all his students that he have taught and also to his peers, teachers, and also friends like us", he said, "Be good to yourself and be good to others." That's what he said. It's not about CRT theory where we're different, we're not alike, we do not understand each other and all that. When we look at people, especially children, you ask them about their friends. They don't see anything other than they're my friends. Let me tell you the truth. Sometimes they call me, people do, uh, even the parents, do call me with different last name. Uh, his pending last name to me. And I would just say, yes. Being in, in Chino Valley Unified School District, when you're looking at our population, it's all mixed and, and, and very balanced. And I would ask our staffs to teach, to be a, proud to be an American. That's what our kids need to learn. It's not those things that, that's not good for our kids, their mental state and health of this nation. Teach how blessed we are to be an American. I have here heard all these parents talking about participation. Dr. Enfield, um, in right timing, I'd like to have community committee or task force formed for many important issues that pertains to our, uh, schools, such as building second Preserve School, uh, task force, so that not only they're informed, but we can address and, and listen to their issues. Uh, and second, also look into forming a grant committee involving, uh, parents and, and look at other districts and, and see if they have such a task force like that. So we could use that and, and get the support from the parents because they would have many insights and many needs that we could address, which would, matter of fact, benefit the most of our children. And just recently, I have gotten phone calls from volunteers from, uh, Chino Hills Bingo Community. They're so willing to come and, 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 and reignite their fundraising activities. So hopefully, after June fifteenth, uh, we would have new mandates and, and, which would allow such activities on our school sites. Again, um, I'd like to thank our cabinet members, our directors, our, our, our district personnels. You have done an awesome job. Our principals really appreciate you guys and our teachers and C S A members. I'd just like to ask, even though it, it might take more time of our, your busy schedules, when our parents do ask for help or losing attention, please listen to them. They are no different than each one of us and many times we need each other. So, this is my comment. Thank you for tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Bridge?
Thank you. I'll, I'll be, uh, brief with just a couple of, uh, couple of comments. Uh, earlier, I think it was mentioned that, uh, in, with the first Preserve School in two thousand and four, that, uh, we were in a bit of financial problem in the district. And if memory serves me correctly, and I'm not on Prevagen, uh, I think we had two hundred and forty-three rifts that year of, of teachers being, uh, being rifted on March fifteenth, which is, uh, you know, serious, uh, financial difficulty when you have to tell two hundred and forty-three teachers that they're likely not going to come back following year. So I just wanted to make that, uh, brief comment. I didn't make it earlier. Uh, I would also like to congratulate the, uh, the graduates of, uh, of the high schools and the, um, and the promotions that took place. Disappointed that, uh, uh, but understood that why we could not attend, but I, uh, everything I heard and saw was, uh, went very well and pleased that we at least had some type of graduation ceremony this year. That was one of the things I advocated when I ran for this position, to try and do that. And I'm, I'm glad we were able to do that. Uh, also, uh, even though graduations taking place, schools out, we still have some athletes that are, um, are playing. And we have at least four teams in the C I F playoffs. There might be more and I apologize if I missed the others. But I know, uh, today we had four, four games. Yala baseball, Chino Hills High softball, Don Lugo baseball and Don Lugo softball. And, uh, want to wish those teams the best and hopefully they came out on the winning side and, uh, looking forward to, uh, to continuing, even though we're out of school for the, um, for the summer. And, uh, I would like to risk, wish, excuse me, the rest of the district, uh, some good time off, uh, this summer. I know Calero will be short, being year-round, starting back in July and the rest will be coming back in, in August. Uh, one thing I, I did want to mention is a former, as a former government teacher, I really prided myself on, with my students. They didn't know how I voted. They didn't know my position because I said, that's not my, that's not why I'm in here. My, I'm in here to get you interested so that you, through your political socialization, either through your parents, your friends, whatever, you decide how you're gonna vote. I just want you to participate. And I really prided myself on getting my students interested to go out and be part of an active community and vote. And it saddens me with what I'm seeing going on nationally now with states trying to take away rights of people to vote by, by laws that are passing. So I just wanted to make that, that comment as a, as a former teacher. So with that, that concludes my comments and I'm disappointed that my, uh, fellow colleagues were not here to listen to that.
Okay. Dr. Enfield has no comments. I just have a couple of brief things, just like, uh, Mr. Bridge. I want to take this opportunity to congratulate all of our graduates. Um, sorry that we weren't able to attend. It was a decision we made, uh, early on and to try to allow as many family members and friends to participate as possible. So congratulations to each of you. Wish all of you the very best and much success in everything that you do. And also, like Mr. Bridge said, uh, we, although school is out, we still do have some sports teams that are participating in C I F playoffs. So let's wish them all the best of luck. I don't have any, uh, updates on scores today, unfortunately, but, uh, we wish them all the best. With that, uh, we will close this regular meeting of the Board of Education at eight twenty-five P M.